Color meetings are ordered. And first of all, I would like to begin by acknowledging that we are in Midmabbe, the traditional territory of the Midmabbe people. We also acknowledge that people of African descent have been in Nova Scotia for over 400 years. And we honor and offer gratitude to those ancestors of African descent who came before us to this land. We have an agenda in front of us all. Are there any changes, deletions, or additions to that agenda? No? Hearing none, I'll ask for approval of the agenda.
So?
Seconded?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded? The ayes have, we have an agenda. Wonderful. Declaration of any conflicts of interest from any of the things that we're going to talk about tonight? None? Okay, great. No delegations or presentations this evening? The minutes of the previous meeting. Does anybody have any changes or anything to add to those? The spellings or anything?
No, I didn't find anything to start. Sorry. I gotta look closer.
Move on to G, business arising from the minutes. Land interests. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, from the minutes, yeah.
I thought you did for the agenda but not for the...
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. All those in favor of those minutes?
Aye.
Contrary minded? Any seconded?
I just, I'll just go if I can.
Okay. Sorry, I was trying to skip it. Mrs. Rajewell, the land interest. Leslie, you want to talk about that?
If I had... I had a contact with Nicole and Peter Lockerbie. They had sent some correspondence back in December. It did come forward to December's council, it was discussed. But in those minutes, when I went back to the December second minute, it says, "Council discussed the letter and asked the CIO to provide more, to provide a more detailed map of the area of the upcoming committee of the whole meeting." So when I moved forward to December's committee of the whole, I can't find where it was discussed again at the committee of the whole level. And I didn't know what to tell the Lockerbies when they made the inquiry the other day as to the decision that council had made on the sale of that unopened section of Third Avenue. So I said to them, "I will bring it back again for clarification from the council. Maybe you folks remember discussing it." The minutes didn't reflect it, so I just wanted to be sure that we were...
I think I expressed to Leslie, I think it got confused with the other party that was looking at the top part of Third Avenue. And kind of got lost in the shuffle. But to my recollection, I think we said no in general. Do you agree? And the street being so...
We did because it was the street railway.
Right. Is that the consensus then? Yeah. Okay. Is that enough?
Thank you very much. That's perfect. That's all I needed. Yep.
Fantastic. Great. Let's now move on to staff reports. The new director of finance report. Got to read through that. Anyone have any questions from that report? Apple budget or frustrating or anything loose?
I've been waiting on that holdback for a while, I think, Captain, maybe?
Jeez. I guess unless we don't get the 10% until all the bills are in and everything's repaid, is that how it works?
I'm pretty sure that's how that works. And then I can find out for sure on the details of it.
Okay.
But I will find out.
Is there anything on an update for the operating budget?
Yeah, so the operating budget, I asked him again the other day. We're close to being a draft for the operating budget, so likely it will come forward. I believe he told me July's, or yeah, probably July's Iowa and Paul's meeting, early July.
Yeah.
But we're close, so.
So I guess keep your vacation schedules open for your meetings. Okay, how about the financial statement and operations? Any questions there? Nothing arising? And what's the financial statement capital?
There wasn't one in the package.
Wasn't, let's just go with the...
You just, yeah.
Director of public works report.
I just had one question about that, a couple actually. One, we were getting steps on the lighthouse, I was wondering when that was gonna happen? Because we're getting into summer and the tourism staff is ready to go. And the second one, where you mentioned the painting the poles of the signs, the downtown signs? Are we gonna move those somewhere or is that where they're gonna be?
Which signs were...
The new ones, I think. Yeah, the new ones. We had talked about it last meeting, that they're down, ones by the toy maker.
The one to downtown.
The ones along the racket. The ones along the racket.
Do you have a preferred position for those two?
We talked about...
One by the corner?
By Church Street.
Frank, yes.
Then we're gonna have town there. Big Frank MacIntosh Memorial Park area. I was just thinking, I'm on Church.
That's right, yeah. Near Learning Grove.
Up near Learning Grove. Is that a way if they miss the current racket, they would, they would have another chance to get that family church.
So are you talking about relocating it or adding another one?
Yeah, relocating. Because the one downtown, you're already downtown, right? You got nowhere to go but downtown. So probably that one on the corner could be moved up to probably Church.
If you put it at Church, it does, the arrow goes left, so you'd be going south to see it properly.
Okay.
So it would, it would work.
We could do a back-to-back. Could we do a back-to-back there?
Sinus doesn't work, directional sinus doesn't work very well if it's right at the street. It should really be before the RCMP driveway. In order to be effective coming that way. And if you're coming the other way, it really should be about same distance in the other direction.
So there's only two signs, so you want, you don't want one on the racket corner?
Well, the one on the racket corner is already...
There's none there either.
By the time you see it, you're already on your way downtown. It's kind of a wasted position.
Yeah.
That one may, that's another left, isn't it?
Where's the racket? Is that downtown?
That's right in the triangle, right from the maritime.
I'd say we put it at MacIntosh right there. As soon as you come off the ferry, you're gonna go down through Racket Road. That's all I thought.
You could put it, put it where it would be seen from the stop sign.
That's what I mean, right? Come off the ferry, it's right there, MacIntosh, boom.
Because then when people are stopped, they may make that decision to turn left.
Right. And we want to get them before they're going.
Yeah.
That's right.
And then if you move the one down the footy corner, that has to arrow the correct way. To go left.
By the police station, yeah.
Right. Yeah.
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 They, I think they both have arrows pointing left.
Yeah, they do. Yes. Yeah. So that would work.
I like that. Looks nice. Gets it twice.
Jacob, just to be clear, I'm trying to think, Andy, that's the same line, but... So just to be clear, we're changing the location of both signs. The one here by the toy maker will come up by the RCMP detachment. So we're along that strip.
About the same sign.
And the one on the racket.
To indicate to turn down Church.
Yeah. And then the one on the racket.
Up to the racket corner.
Will go across from the stop sign offshore road.
Where are we even? See it most visibly from the stop sign? Or even before, I guess, if you put it on Shore Road before.
It's a busy...
Is that all loop sign still there?
This way.
I think so. We're two kilometer loop or whatever.
Sure.
And replace it.
Well, I know, like, if you're, if you're not from here, I would look at it and say, "Loop, loop to what?"
Yeah.
Does not really explain it very...
That sign down there too, by the Racket Road, would be good back-to-back as well. Because if you're coming down to the ferry, you'd be over 50 minutes early.
Yeah.
Downtown's right there, it'll still be something to eat. And then you're back the other way, booyah.
Yeah, there's just more money.
It is, but at least it's two posts in my life. Or it's all...
I think you were saying back-to-back.
Yeah. I mean, you don't have to do an app, but it could be something down there. Yeah. Yeah. It just doesn't make sense where they are. No, it doesn't. I didn't see that one over there. No. Yeah, right there. Already going downtown. Yeah.
Yeah, you're almost there, right?
Yeah, you're on the street.
Okay, anything else in the director of public works? I had a question, Leslie. They ordered a new Joe Casey plaque.
Yeah.
That's what I was just asking about.
So the one that we had down here on the waterfront, that used to sit here, it's all peeling and faded.
Oh, okay.
So we ordered just a, yeah, we had to. I think the sun is just not good for that location.
Yeah, it's just like that one.
Nope, it's the one down here. Yeah, right on them. There's a little one, well, it's gay big.
There's only a picture anyway, isn't there?
There's like a picture over there. The lighthouse steps, I did ask about those today. And he's really not in favor of adding any new steps there.
They're, they're too small according to the CIO to get even our staff in there to do something, so you just have to have...
Do you want to widen those steps?
Sider wider steps is all we need, right?
I will pass it on. Thank you.
I mean, unless he thinks staff can go in there all right.
He didn't see an issue with staff getting in a notice.
No?
Where we're just storing... He didn't really see the need of a handrail either. I did mention that too, so.
How often is the staff going in and out?
Probably every day.
Daily.
Every day.
Be two, two weeks, two students.
I haven't really looked at, I think Tom said they're too steep.
They are good.
Yeah.
It's, it's higher than you think it is.
And then steps are short, are they?
Well, they're short, they're going up steep, right? So you need something that goes down.
Not a wrong...
On a better angle, right? I mean, does he contract that in or are they making themselves?
No, they can make them. They can do it.
Yeah. It, it should be done.
I will put it back on the...
It's not $40,000.
Just that they're lifting boxes and stuff in.
That's right. Yeah. As long as it's not $40,000, we're good.
Understood.
Has Town Works done, there's nothing in this report here, done anything at all yet for in front of basin place?
No, nothing yet.
Yeah, I think they'll wait till September.
Yeah.
I thought you might have tried it back and see, see anything else.
Well, I think he's anxious to look at it and, and start the work there, but he does understand that you folks want it to wait, so.
Okay. Good. Now, anything else with the director of public works report? Okay, we'll go on to the special constable and bylaw officer. Susie, can you guys are working all right? Leslie, there was nothing I didn't see here, maybe I'm wrong. Did we not discuss possibly adding a camera for washrooms outside the transtion?
I think we did when we had the break-in. It's probably just gotten slipped off the agenda, but I will...
You suggested a cheaper version, just a stick up there. So can you see the outside?
Yeah, the other thing was back to Dibby Station as well. I don't know if you, I just got rejected because of the range, it's like a, it's like a big storm there.
Oh, it wasn't...
No, he said it was on, so I said fix, but I don't know.
Okay, I will... That's the list.
And if you could, for me, say thank you very much for hanging the picture?
Yeah.
It'd look great.
It does look great.
It does. You don't even have to do anything to it. It would look super.
It does.
It does. Okay, protective services report. Anything there?
I, I, I talked to Laura Lee about with regards to dog tags.
Yes.
Dog tags are for like a big German shepherd and not for small dogs. She said she had like tons of the big, big ones, and I wonder if we should order some small ones.
I think we found them in the...
Did you find them in the small ones?
I think we found various, various small ones. Yeah.
Very good. I'll be in tomorrow.
Dangerous and encyclical. Any two items?
At least they're complying.
Yes.
Will we stay to talk this? Anything in addition to add to that? The grant coordinates will be Rob's last report. The ATV associations put the signs up on the trail, that's nice. And for the most part, seems to be well respected. Did notice that there was one, there's burnout marks on the street on Montague Road where they come off the tracks across. Right up from Peter and...
From you?
Pearls, yes.
Okay.
But there's always gonna be one every... And Leslie, I wonder if you could, not right now, put it on the next committee of the whole. I think the six-month review is coming up for that.
Is he gonna do that today? Yeah, I know. Yeah.
So we'll have to look at that. Let's get the public has any more in.
Chair?
Yes.
I see the, I was out on the trail outside of town recently. And I see they have a machine going along clearing both sides, like they got 30 feet on each side all cleared. Do you know how, does anybody know how far they're coming with that? Are they, are they stopping at town limits or are they...
I know the same machine's been out on Shore Road to Shore Road on the side, so I imagine it's probably...
I believe this is done through the grant. It's a private machine.
Oh.
It's a private machine and like I say, they've cleared, I would say 30 feet on each side at least of the trail from Acacia Valley Road to close to the Barton Road. And then spots here and there. So I'm just curious if they had plans, if anybody knew if they had plans on coming right into town or how far into town. I mean, it looks nice when you're out in the country on the trail, boy, they're doing a number on it.
I'm not sure. I didn't find it.
Yeah.
So you prefer not to have them?
Well, not to that extent.
Yeah.
Right? It, it's nice to have them bushed back, but they're really like opening it up.
Instead of doing that, I'd like to see them actually fix up the trail itself, because it's a couple of places it's starting to get pretty rutted.
Yeah, it's, it's rough going outside of town.
And from the Admiralty Museum behind theirs, that's actually quite rutted.
Now, maybe that, that might be in their plans, because I think they have a drag of some kind that they take down through there, or maybe they get the, the grader. I've seen, I've seen it done before, just didn't witness it. We've got council aware.
As you guys know, the pop-up tent. We gotta do something with that, you know?
I would be.
Yeah, the new one. Maybe Council Rick would know what we could do with something that shows the actual display of our...
What's your...
Emblem, well, it's just a blue tent because you can't even see the town of Dibby on it.
We could look at, it depends on how you want to do it. We could look at the backdrop that's there and have it cut. Apparently the backdrop that came is way too big for that. It needs to be cut in probably three pieces. You could do the backdrop and put, same as they did on, on the top. It's just a vinyl.
Yeah, that'd be nice. And behind us would be the big symbol.
Yeah.
That would be nice.
Or you could put, if you don't want it down low, just put it across the top.
Yeah.
Put something across the top. And having it too big means you're gonna be blocking it most of the time.
Yes.
Something like that is better to have it above your...
Header kind of thing. I was thinking of that too.
Above everything that you're doing there.
Yeah. I was thinking of the header, they had like a header there, so people know when they come up. If they didn't, it kind of, if it wasn't for that holdup one we had there, the roll-up one, we'd be looking rough.
Infractable.
Yeah.
Do we like it then?
Can we give it back?
Is it, I, you know, it is cumbersome and large, but having been on the outside and functions like that on a downpour day that's windy, you'd be very thankful to have it.
Yeah.
It's a, it's sturdy.
In, in rugged weather, or if you're gonna be there more than one day, it would be nice to have. To put it up for an afternoon or something like that, it's overkill.
Yeah. So what about putting it at the dog park or the picnic table?
Your vinyl won't last forever if it's left out.
Yeah. Right.
You, you know. It, it's, it's one of those things that they're made for temporary use. You might get three, six months out of it if you leave it out like that. But once the sun gets out of it, it's gonna break down eventually.
It'd look like that one would fade pretty good too.
Yeah.
Pretty big. It's a monster.
So I guess maybe an, an idea would be to find a better place to store it. Where's it? It's down in the stockroom, in the storeroom down here. And it takes up a lot of the storeroom and it's a tripping hazard.
I, my thought was that we're supposed to have a home after public works somewhere.
That would be a good idea.
No, whether that's gonna come, I will find out.
Yeah, and...
Well, they just got rid of 16-foot long signs, they should have...
Well, that's true.
We could look at that backdrop. I think Ralph Mullen may be able to cut it and sew it. He's done some amazing work. And he's right here in town. If not, the people up in Bear River may be able to do it. It can be done, well, even if, after, if you don't want to sew it, if it's just, if it's just gonna be double-sided tape, Dibby signs can do it. Either way.
Let's say if we could take that, maybe to council, at least do something with that tent backdrop would be a thing.
Right now, the, the walls are not useful.
They're not?
No. According to what Rob told me, there was a mistake when they did the wall. And instead of getting three 10-foot walls, we got one 40-foot wall. That would wrap right around it, but that's, you really need individual panels.
They gave us the wrong pricing, so instead of, he got a really good deal on the walls, but it wasn't the pieces they want. But it was good because it was a cheap price, but I guess now what I think I'm hearing is we'll probably get Mr. Mullen, give us a price.
Yeah.
Do something with it. And see if Town Works has a place to store it.
And if you need, if you need Ralph's number, I have.
That sounds good. There's nothing else in this report, so I'll look for a motion to accept when the holders present. So? Seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those contrary minded? Motion is passed. Next on the list is correspondence, and the first one is from the Grace United Church of Canada. Leslie, is this point moot at the moment?
Yeah.
Are we still considering the location or...
Well...
Still gotta bring it through, as I understand.
We have the official application for development permit for the fire hall over in that location. Yeah, when Tom was here last week, we quickly looked at it, him and I. I don't think that lot is big enough. So when I contacted Bruce Snell, he was adamant that Tom had told him he only needed 15 feet. So I said, "You're gonna have to look at this." Because I didn't want to argue with Bruce and I didn't want to... Because Tom and I had had that conversation the day before, and then when I contacted Bruce, he's adamant that it's going there, so. I didn't want to get in a battle with either one, so.
I believe there was also a zoning issue, because even though it is a commercial area, that's an institutional...
Use.
Use.
Yeah.
Which, which means you have to have more of a buffer.
Yeah. And I don't know, Tom maybe didn't realize that when he spoke to Bruce Snell about it first, before he had a chance to look into it. Or he just, from memory, just said to Bruce, "Oh, you only need 15 feet," thinking that that was a commercial zone, when in reality it's...
It's an institutional use.
It's industrial, but yeah. So I'm just kind of sitting on it till Tom gets back.
When is your next fire committee meeting?
I don't have that in front of me right now. I don't think it's for a while.
So is Bruce like the project manager now? They turned over him or...
Bruce seems to be the project manager for, for the, for the site, so.
Well, he should know then.
Should know.
It's an institutional development.
Well, he would know. He wouldn't know.
Leslie?
I thought he was looking into it.
No. That's why he made, he just made the application and Tom's the development officer. And when Tom looked at it, he said, "There, there is not enough space there," so. I reached out to Bruce, he, like I say, he's adamant that it's going there, so.
Well, it's not a gray area, it's EBSR.
Yeah.
And that's up to Tom.
Yeah. It's up to Tom. And that's why I didn't push the issue, so.
And we did make a suggestion, possibly there's areas, just call their fire grounds.
Just as we're going, big back there.
Right there.
That's true. Close to the airport, yes.
Oh, when this letter came from the United Church, I thought it was important to bring back.
Absolutely.
We start building up our industrial work.
Should we reply, reply to them and just...
I would think.
Let them know that there are no immediate plans and we'll keep them updated?
Well, there's, there's no... There are plans. Nothing's been approved yet.
Yeah, nothing's been, yeah.
It's in the development process.
Yeah.
We're waiting here after the development officer.
Does that mean, thank them for their letter of concern?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think after their big fire, they're probably a little concerned more than...
Yeah.
They're very respectful. They, they understand that the department needs to have a training facility. They, they don't deny that, but just looking for a...
Thank you.
Absolutely. Nairmath Hospital Foundation's basically just a thank you letter.
My favorite one.
Which is nice, but apparently they didn't with the miracles.
Oh, that's a... Can you ever lay back?
We just sent her a note, signed it, had me.
Yeah.
And the letter from Lepa Tootie. Yeah, and she was talking about the rat problems.
Right. Okay, and I understand that Laura Lee is looking into a system of some kind to...
So we had a talk today, yes, because I wanted to be sure. So she, HRM, I said, "Well, what does HRM do?" And, and they have methods that they're attempting to deal with it, such as almost a rebate for property owners if they're willing to implement some kind of pest control system or like, and there's different methods that they're trying. But, but they recognize there's a problem in HRM too, and, and they're having, they're frustrated too. Now, we can, we do have minimum housing standards and minimum rental housing standards that does refer to pest prevention and control. And it's rental dwellings, units shall be kept free of germs, vermin, and insects at all times. An appropriate extermination measure shall be taken as necessary. So that is in both the bylaw, that minimum rental housing standard bylaw and the minimum housing standard bylaw. So there, there are tools that we can use if we can locate the source of the problem.
Is this...
It's a turkey.
Be careful too, there are cats that can get into that too.
Is this something that is a problem in certain areas of town more than others that we know of?
Well, that was my next question. I asked her, I said, "Do you hear very often from people complaining about rats?" She said in the whole time she's been here, she might have had four written complaints about rats.
So I, I live next door to a bait factory. And I've yet to see a rat on my property. So I'm not sure...
Yeah, this might be a good time for us to tighten up the garbage situation.
That, that may be what it is.
That's where we talked about littering. Because a lot of people, the garbage is picked up on Thursday, it's full again on Friday on the road. I think Tom said if anything goes in the street, we can legally find out.
But we need to, if we tighten it up, this is the time, we can address this rat issue. The problem is, you're putting garbage aside for a week, wait for the garbage people to come pick up. But we need to, if we tighten it up, this is the time, we can address this rat issue, the problem is, you're putting garbage aside for a week, waiting for the garbage people to come pick up, you can't be doing that.
Yeah.
That's right.
And. Yeah, the garbage bins, some of them are not very secure.
Yeah, that's right.
So it doesn't stop the, the rodents from getting in.
Yeah, she, she, me, I have a mesh, tiny golf squared mesh all through mine, there's no way nothing's getting in.
There's another problem with a lot of them, that the grass is growing up all around them, and that just provides a place to hide.
It's true. Yeah, they dig the holes underneath too, with the property across the street, they don't even put their garbage inside the boxes and boxes. And it's, well, you.
Go down the ground.
You walk by it.
I do shit all the time, it's all we can match.
Yeah, it's like, it's time we started charging people for that.
So, I, I, I don't quite understand, I, we sort our garbage out to the ladder, so when we have garbage bags. It really is, besides something that might smell.
It's real food in it, other than.
It shouldn't.
The occasional wrapper that you can't compost.
Right, so I don't understand what's, are they not sorting their garbage?
Well, they don't use their garbage containers, just, I mean, come across them where I live, and you'll see what they do. I think maybe you pull that yogurt cap off, there's a little bit of yogurt still on there.
And then you wash it.
You know, yeah, like that type of stuff needs to be kind of, not, I don't wanna say addressed, but stressed, you know? Start cleaning your stuff a little bit more.
So maybe some better education.
Yes, a better education.
Maybe.
Maybe, listen, we, you cannot put your garbage out until Thursday, you'll have to pick up day, or even give them warnings, like start with warnings, like.
Yeah, we're given warnings, but at what, we have to put it wrong here, maybe go back to the bylaw. Cause it's kind of like, where I am on Prince William, no one has a garbage box. We all pour our garbage out the night before the morning of, most people throw an old blanket over it or something, but. Unless it's crows once in a while.
Yeah.
It doesn't get ripped apart.
But you're not putting it, you're not putting it up Friday for next Thursday.
Right.
You think maybe the garbage bins create more problems than they solve?
I don't think so.
Uh, and are they by the roads, cause that's.
An open one maybe.
An open one, yeah.
That doesn't make no sense.
I haven't had, nothing in mind.
You, you should have an enclosed, secured bin, or it, it doesn't work. Right, doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, if it's not closed.
Okay.
A lot of people.
Yeah, it's the same thing, it's not.
They don't even put them in the box. It's mostly apartment buildings.
It's true.
They don't put them in the box.
The old fire department place, that's a nightmare, that one, they go up there, that's wide open, a big monster green bin, they must've got it from some, must've got it from Waste Check.
Old fire, R C P.
The old fire, R C P, R C P, sorry, not fire, R C P. Yeah, you're right. The guy was a nightmare, that, uh, did guarantee rats.
There's new, uh, bylaw policy regarding about a garbage bin.
Yeah, in the, in the solid waste, in the solid waste bylaw, it does reference, uh, storage, so, yeah. I don't have the exact word in front of me, but yes, there is reference in the solid waste bylaw as to a storage can.
Maybe we can revisit it and make sure we have enclosed ones at least, and stress that the garbage, we cannot go outside until the morning of the garbage pickup.
Yeah.
For the garbage that's left, and let's say if they don't clean it up, if we clean it up, would we add that to their tax bill or?
We fine it, he should fine it. Yeah. But we're talking about rats now, more than garbage too, right?
Yeah, there's, there's gotta be some relationship there.
There is guaranteed, yeah. This one's down in here, oh my god, it's ridiculous, one in the back of these businesses.
Is there, and Mike, you might know better, is there the same sort of issues in the commercial zone? Or is it worse or better?
If you don't clean them, it's, can be worse.
Okay.
But we had, like Leo and I, we had pest control, so we, we controlled it, and he cleaned them too, believe it or not, Leo took them and got people to clean them. There's a few restaurants in town that are, you have a lot of grease and stuff, I mean, it gets dirty. But that's where, maybe you set up something with, with that bin boss guy and say, listen, next time it's like that, we're gonna clean them and we're gonna bill you.
I know that at Home Hardware, we had no issues, but re, minor issues, until suddenly there was an outbreak at the Tim Hortons, their little trash.
Yeah, oh, that place.
And, and it gets so bad that in the middle of the afternoon, you could see.
I've seen them there.
Loads, loads of them, and then they did something, and they all sort of came across the street, so we now, the state still had pest control, they cleaned it down, like, and it's, it's under control, it's not bad at all.
I also had somebody sort out the subject, the same subject, because people are wondering when they tell the Siesta Dam, who's gonna have rats? Maybe?
Yes.
Well, there's rats there.
That back here is a mess.
You gotta have wonder though, that there's nothing there for them to eat.
They might be just living, but they go, what is it, a thousand feet or something?
They bring their little.
Their back, yeah, as long as they can get underneath stuff, that's then another issue, like leaving junk everywhere for them to get underneath and hide forever, they're warm, they're, you know, comfy.
I tell them there's probably more raccoons than it is there are rats.
One reason the stray cat thing is, you know, if you get all the cats on the street, we're in big trouble. Another one, right?
Well, that's another problem too, we've got fox in town now.
And we got foxes.
A lot of foxes.
Maybe we can ask Waste Check, would they, maybe they know something? What rat can flourish or some kind of?
They may have some, um.
Mint or cinnamon, there's one smell that rats don't like.
Really? I was just thinking Waste Check may have some, uh, promotional material that we can, uh, use to create like a little.
Yeah.
It does, it does have some kind of education form, boy.
Yeah, that's.
I mean, we gotta address this, we can't just be giving people rebates to go buy poison and all that, and who knows what they're doing, right?
Yeah.
They can't beat the math, but the garbage thing, it's here's the time to clean it up, I don't like when you're free, I'm done with it, you know?
Yeah, they just started, and then fine, I think we.
It's the same offenders, it's the same people always.
Yeah, yeah, we strengthen our policy a little bit on keeping it tight and keeping it clean.
I don't necessarily think it's a, it's, it's an enforcement.
Yes, yeah, it is, yeah, we need an enforcement, you're right, sucks. But we don't want rats and we don't want garbage.
Well, no, nobody wants to be the bad guy, but nobody wants to have infestation of rats on their property, it's not their fault.
It's disgusting, it's. So, so where, did she get ahold of you, uh, Rick?
She emailed me, and I did reply to her and told her I'd be bringing this up, I was actually, um, here's, here's what I wrote back to her. Hi Nella, we've already been discussing taking action against garbage which is put out before the proper day, and garbage that is not cleaned up and bags are broken, et cetera. It does seem that rats, et cetera, attracted by garbage, and it would make sense to start there, I will bring this up at our next meeting, and try to find out what action the town can take. So, um. How do we answer? Would that come through the? Through the town office or?
Yeah, we can draft or, I mean, I think if we have Laurlee go out and do some inspections, to see what's there for waste receptacles, containers.
Yeah.
You know, some education as to proper storage and, and dates to put your stuff on the road, and I think there's some tools there that we can use to.
Right.
I'm not saying it's gonna eliminate them all, because I think that's probably impossible.
Yeah.
I think it may help.
I don't know, besides someone coming forth and telling that, that they have a problem.
Yeah.
I did, how did you ever know where the rats are, they're really active mostly at night, unless you've got pest control tracking or finding, you know?
I could tell you, like, just example wise, eighty-nine Sydney Street, uh, is a nightmare.
There's a few houses like that.
It's ridiculous. You know what I mean, you know, that place, I went there and was doing some pamphlet, I, I don't know, you know, I can't.
To me, it's funny you say that, now, I would think where Allen's Fish Plant is, there's lots, everything, things fall off trucks and everything else, and we've got a vacant building, we've been trying, you know, to get it controlled.
Oh, that's probably.
I would be more concerned what comes out of that if you could point that out.
We need it down. I don't know, it's coming up next year.
Could be.
And she made a good point too, like when I talked to Laurlee today, she said, when we toured, when we had the Neil's Fish Plant board in, that was probably a source for a hate.
Oh, yeah.
So you tear that down, and those rats just relocate somewhere else, so.
When I was looking at that yacht boat launch thing at the, at the wharf.
Mm-hmm.
I took Rob down the first day he was here, there was rats all around there in the daytime, yeah, gross, and that was down on the side of the wharf.
Has anybody been on the wharf lately, how good they're doing with their cleanup?
I've been down the wharf a lot.
No, they do quite well, they've got their bins back, they've taken them away from the wall, and they put the big signs out, no dark, no dark beds.
Okay, cause that would be an even, right?
Yeah, sure.
I think, like I say, it's time to tell people to clean their yards up for sure, and that's it, like eighty-nine Sydney Street, is that my first stop?
Yeah, it's.
It's important, like you say. There's another one on Church Street too, Rick.
I, I think it's education first, and then it's important.
Yeah, no, it has to be.
Been warned.
Yeah. We can, we can get it open now, with our learnable and stuff as well, right?
Yeah, that's right. Now, I think Church Street, you just mentioned the lawn.
Oh, yeah.
That's exit, did we contact exit for that to tell them the lawn, it's, it's, it's a house for sale right by the ball field.
Yeah, that's good reading.
I think it's, uh, it's, what is it?
Right by the ball field, it's got an exit for sale sign.
Okay, we can, we can look that up.
Lawn is like, oh.
Okay.
Over your truck needs. It's the same one, it's on Victoria Street there, one forty-two.
Yeah, same property.
Man, like, come on, and you're talking about one, hold on, we go over here, you're talking about eighty-third.
Church.
The picture on Google, like, it's like that.
Eighty-third?
Eighty-third's Church.
Eight.
Eighty-third Church.
Ball field anyway. It's the market meals on.
Okay. Uh, yeah, and that's, you have the house that I know, another one, like I say, is thirty-seven-one, like, it's only on there.
It would be seventy-one.
Church. It's gonna be, it's, there's some houses going in the back, of some.
Uh, that one, that one right.
Yeah, that one right there, right next to, you know, where Susan lives, right, and then there's a house, then there's the highway.
Isn't that public housing? Yeah.
It's right there.
Oh, okay.
Like.
It is public housing on there, it is public housing, I don't think, it's almost right across the great turners.
Okay.
There is so much stuff everywhere there, kids' stuff, everything in the back, it's, it's a mess.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So, if we're going long to J one, is that the shell located? Oh, yeah.
Or in business?
Yeah, so. We, we looked at, we looked at the skull shell again, I sent everybody an email on it, um. I, I don't know, we're convinced the Torres Bureau are gonna stay down there or not, so the worry of, of the group is that, well, if the Torres Bureau moves, we've got a hundred fifty thousand dollar shell. Sitting there for nothing, and then you can't sell the property again, right, cause you gotta, well, they'll tell us to move it, obviously, right, but, uh. So we did look at, uh, the end of Maiden Lane, so we have the right of way there through Maiden Lane. So that's, that's what we're proposing now, is to put it there. You can see nice when you come around the corner, like the old B I C, you can see it actually, when you come down around that corner, you'll be able to see it. Um, I know, Ed, I think Ed mentioned about snow removal and stuff, but.
It's not a favor, that's.
For three snowstorms for the rest of the year is kinda, you know what I mean, it's, it's a.
Would it have to be snow removal in there in the winter, or is he talking about snow removal, that's where they push it?
That's where they push it.
So you'd have to have access past it.
Right. See, that's one thirty-two Water Street, is that where we're going with it?
No, mainly, mainly, right next to where Tan's doing the yellow house.
If you, if you come down Maiden Lane, go directly towards the marina.
Oh, so it's right behind the marina, right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can see the marina in the background.
I was wondering what that was.
And the mock-up shows it at basically a ground level, but if you were to raise it just a couple of feet, you'd see it coming, well, you would definitely see it coming past the post office if you're driving.
So it's a good green space, if you wanted to use a green space there to develop it.
It sucks, it's next to the craziest place in town.
Well.
Definitely makes us clean it up.
I know you have, you've got it on a cement base.
You better clean that.
It would be a larger cement portion, so that, you know, wouldn't it have to be that stuck in the middle of road?
Now, this is just like a very quick mock-up.
That's a quick mock-up.
The, the plan is to have a, a real cement base, and then even at this, maybe raise it a little bit.
Yeah.
Um, find a way that it's sort of protected.
So that's gonna order the place burnt down there.
That's where O'Neill's used to be, Casey's, remember, he used to have a, an overpass over type thing, and the road goes underneath.
There were two buildings with an overpass between them.
Well, there and you.
If you come down Maiden Lane, keep driving.
Yeah, like, you know, well, if you could see it right now, like, this is, uh, this is where rats are here.
That's the, that's the marina, that's the yellow house.
So you're coming down right down here.
Okay, so there's that boat launch.
Yeah, yeah.
It's actually owned, like, just a little.
I think we own it right away.
Thirty-five, thirty-three feet.
With the, with the Maiden Lane and.
Right at Maiden Lane.
How wide?
Thirty-three feet.
I'm guessing thirty-three.
Thirty-three feet.
We own thirty-three, three feet wide there, going all the way down?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just nice.
So at, at a important meeting that I was at last week, Sherman Angel's there, and he sort of mentioned about a boat launch, because we were talking about putting the gravel over there.
Hmm.
And he says, well, we're, they're trying to do it now, never worked, because of tide, so, he says, you'll never get a boat launch there, it'll never work.
At this area here.
Yeah, that area, it'll never work.
So you don't have, you don't have the room to build it out because the marina's there.
Yeah.
Where the, where the farmer's market.
Well, Farmer's Market's up on the. Up on the waterfront.
Yeah, more plot.
No, but that'd be like, I think it'd like something like an apple sauce.
Yeah, I know. Well, actually, the parking lot behind, um, the Chinese restaurant, that's, that was designated Farmer's Market for the town.
I know, you're talking.
Years ago, yeah, but we need to park it, but the thing is with that is it's, you can walk around town.
Right.
And, and there it is, and you go up to the park, and you can, you're here, you're parked, and we gotta clean that parking lot across the street that we own up, so it's not dark and dingy in there.
That would definitely help with the skull shell, we have the market there.
Yeah, but it, it would, it would be a bit like better location than up there.
Please just put the barricade up for the day on the market days, let people walk in.
Where's that?
Marine, I'd like to spot your company a little bit.
I think it's big enough, you know, thirty-two feet.
See, we only own, we don't own all the property, just that thirty-three feet, so even to get parking, you may have to negotiate with the landlord.
You might have to, on this side.
Yeah, on the side towards the.
But again, across the street is parking, that is town parking, right?
Yeah.
And people are already trying to when they come down town.
They park at the marina.
Generally, people will park at a place like Digby Center and say, oh, look, let's go walk over there and see that.
Right, right, yeah.
And I think there's a lift station or something there, is that, that's where it is, so that'll keep that clear for sure, that, you know, no development anyway, but it, it's food for thought. Like I say, we still have to get the engineer and all that stuff anyway.
So, Mike, you want to make a motion to take that to council or permission?
Yeah, make a motion.